Looking at projects that people are sort of wondering, well, does this really fit or does it not really fit? And that's the kind of job that we have, is to kind of figure out, well, what about DT really works here and what really doesn't work here? But I assure you, it was thought out and it's completely-
Oh, yeah. I'll send you the link.
Okay. We're about to start, actually.
We're gonna do number two.
It'd be nice if it was like highlighted where the difference-
Well, here it is. Yeah, so you know two differences.
Hi. Hello, how are you?
Good, sir.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Let's see. This one recommends to the- recommends the applicant go to the ZBA. This one is ran away from mine.
So, good to see you. To our faculty.
And, okay.
No, thanks.
Have they?
This is just like taking- Forward without actually making a recommendation.
No, we're saying that you gotta get up in your hands. It's gonna be something to go with. It seems like a sort of recall.
And then we'll come back.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. This is the December meeting of the regular, the meeting of the planning board of the Village Docks Ferry. Tonight, Thursday evening, December seventh, two thousand seventeen. I'm honored that we have with us tonight Donna Cassell, who's been working with the planning board for many years, now deputy mayor. And we congratulate-
Yay!
Well done.
And we're delighted that you're still the liaison to the planning board.
Love it.
It's really great. I would take a motion to open our meeting. Second, all in favor? Thank you. We have three items on our agenda tonight. The first is to approve the minutes of the November meeting. I have reviewed them and have no comments. Does anyone else have additions or corrections? I would move the-
Sorry, did I miss the moment when, because I saw my vote was not there. Was I late? I'm guessing I was late. I saw I had no-
You're arriving at eight oh one, so obviously we've got a lot down in that.
Ah, okay.
Exactly. So, I was just only on page two or three, item two. Under discussion, I thought we might clarify our direction to the applicant, that there was a concern that proceeding strictly with the Allen Street property would leave a highly non-conforming condition on Allen, on, sorry, Ashford. So, I think we gave direction, so I thought it might be worth noting that. Okay? Any other additions? Otherwise, I would move that the adoption of the minutes. Second. All in favor? Thank you. As I said, we have two items on our agenda. We're gonna change the order and we're gonna do item number, well, it's item number three on the agenda. A one twenty-seven Hilldale Road pre-submission conference for site plan review for proposed rear two-story addition.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Shane Dishar. One twenty-seven Hilldale Road. And maybe two-story addition in the rear of the house. Including basement and extensions to the very front of the building. I'm sure you have the view of the plan. A single family.
You have a, um, on the one side of the house, you're basically extending, though that side is non-conforming currently, right, on the side you're at?
Ask the zoning.
You already have a zoning approval?
The zoning AHRB approval is more than that.
He has received allowances for extension, but it just did not perform.
Okay, thank you. And is there any change to the trees?
No, there's nothing moving.
The, uh, the total is sort of a minor point, but as the stair comes down next to the addition, it looks like it gets extremely narrow at the bottom. You have your plans there?
Right, number six, third floor.
Oh, it's more on the architectural plan than-
We've drawn-
Uh, it's drawn three of five. It doesn't matter below that. How do you do it? Oh, I think, uh, so at this point here, basically, it indicates up, but I think that's down, right? So, at the, at the bottom of the stairs, that is below the bay window?
Number-
I think I've answered my own question, actually.
From the staircase passes under the bay window?
Ah, yeah, so there's not a headroom issue there. I looked at the elevation, I guess. So, disregard that.
So, just as you get an area variance for the extension of existing nonconformity, which you've gotten, as we change the impermeable surface from driveway to, uh, to buildings, under a new site plan, we should see stormwater retention for just the new area.
Yeah, who's bringing you?
Yes.
The drain will bring you up in the driveway, uh, and come to patio.
Do our drains go into a drywall in the dry line? That you could tie roof layers and-
Uh, I think these things goes to the sewer.
Okay, so now it should go through a drywall. So, you've got to investigate that and add it to the site plan. So, you could add the, the COTEX to the site plan in the grass area or whatever and find out, you know, with a diapath or something later where that's going. And then, once you excavate for the footings, then you could move those pipes into the COTEX. All right, so just put a note in COTEX on, on the site plan.
Yep. Thank you. And have you received the, uh, the list, the, our village's consulting engineers' list of comments?
We've responded to the question.
Those will all be answered to this satisfactory. Thank you. What do we consider the, uh, the six foot five inches from, uh, the deck to the side of the property exactly?
They use the variance for that.
They receive that also?
Yeah.
And that would exist in the existing, we really have that six foot five.
The existing-
If you look at the existing-
The existing deck, right.
If you can't have that.
Not just the deck, right? But the-
But it was the building footprint too, man.
The foot, building footprint is close to the other side and then the deck is close to that side. But you have variance for both.
If you look at the existing site plan, where is it?
Uh, what page is the existing site plan?
Again, this should have site plan before the existing, or over there. And if you're having it over there. So, I'm assuming you have it, you give the property a celebration.
Oh, there it is. Well, so currently it's, uh, it's six foot five just on this little corner.
Did you have this picture?
I don't think I have that. I don't have that picture. Yes, apparently it's just one little corner. Oh, now it's getting established. Now, there's a shed on the property as well, right?
I have this. So, maybe it's-
Uh, it's not on the survey? I thought I saw it on the property. Are there any other comments or questions? I think, um, I would move that we call for a public hearing in our next meeting. Is there a second? All in favor? Thank you. So, please deal with the comments from the engineer and any additional comments you may have. And, um, let's come up tonight and we'll see you in January. Or whenever you are ready. Thank you, sir. Thanks. Do we want to see landscaping or screening? Is that an expectation? Are we, is there an expectation to see landscaping or any changes that I would want? If it was on the engineering note, it was great. Good question. Thank you. Item, I, which is, now, item three on the agenda would be, uh, the Allen Street parcel related three sixty-four Ashford Avenue. This is a continuation of a public hearing. I would move we open the public hearing. Is there a second? All in favor? Thank you.
So, Patty Snyder, here representing, uh, the property of David Nathan. Um, as we discussed before, this is the parcel that's being supplemented. So, it's from Allen to Ashford. There's another piece of property, two lots here that lie after the owner and same person. What we're proposing to this point is take twenty-five feet from this property, add to this property, have that as a single family lot. Have this parcel remain as a, as a parcel with the existing nonconformity. And then merge those two lots into a single lot.
Well, that's, that's interesting, but I think that's in the future. I think our focus of this application is the Allen Street property and the requirements to legalize that lot and move forward.
So, anything specific you need to-
Sorry, I, I had understood we didn't want to leave the Ashford property isolated here and that we wanted to do both simultaneously. That's why I thought we left it last time. So, we-
No, I see.
We had discussion about that. Yep. I brought that up. I mean, I think thought process maybe to go the other way, but for the chairman. So, if the applicant doesn't come back after this, let's suppose this is approved and they don't come back, now that five-family house has zero parking and that's-
Four-family house.
Well-
Four-family existing legal.
It actually has a lot of parking because it's still- No, but it's not. He could sell that in the family, right? Because not, it's not a, it's on its own parcel, that house.
That house is on its own parcel. The parking that it currently has is adjacent on the neighboring property.
Exactly.
So, there's no change.
But we're gonna require, as part of that, I believe is an agreement with the neighboring property owner.
Sure.
Which will be agreement with, you know, essentially himself at this point. You require that there be an agreement to have two additional spaces on that lot.
Two additional on which lot?
On the easterly lot for the, the existing four-family house.
You mean it was five?
Is it, yeah, but is it five? Is there zero spaces there now?
Zero.
Okay, yeah, five, excuse me, five, right. Five spaces.
Yeah, effectively what we've done is we've included on the subdivision map, which I understand is not the one we're dealing with, but I drafted it.
I see.
Um, we have a note on there which actually says that if a mandatory thing is the license provided for five-family basis.
Right.
So, and I think, you know, I defer to the artist on a, like, the way I look at it, it's much better to have a license for that than any kind of specific easement, because we don't know what can happen with this property. So, the license means regardless of what happens, they have to provide the five new RV bases. Over.
That would seem to be- I'll, I'll see. I think a man needs to be an easor. We could discuss that at another time.
Okay.
Either way, a license and/or an easement to ensure that the park- The license is transferable to any other owner. It's supposed to be easement. License isn't usually not forever, an easement is. Is there an easement, a specific definition of the location on, as opposed to a license, which is any useful parking? Yeah, you'll have to, you'll have to-
It might be, it might be a sequence, that by having the owner's to have it is a license. And the word says that license is to revert to common easement.
It's a possibility.
Specific lots, parking spaces on the other parcel provided for a reason.
I think we make a general for now and then we'll, we'll delve into the details before it gets finalized. Okay, that was my concern. Thank you.
Do we know if we're sure?
I don't know. This is a public hearing. We opened a public hearing. Yeah, we did, yeah. Let's see whether we've come to some public hearing. Anybody wish to comment on this subject? So, yes, please.
Frank Sainz, old point of the Allen Street, uh, and the Allen Street next to the last, uh, place.
Microphone.
Uh, last time I was here, I was confused. This one, I'm more confused because with, uh, putting everything together with the Ashford Avenue thing, now, anything, was anything approved with the lot next to me on Allen Street? Did they get the property or what's going on with that?
That's what we're doing right now.
Oh, so you don't know if you have a problem?
Do you know the, the-
Use the microphone, please.
Sorry, there. Um, the, there's a contract of sales for twenty-five feet on this property going to this. For that to happen, they have to get this subdivision because we can't transfer it otherwise. So, once that's done, that closing takes place, that is that seventy-five hundred square feet. And you're the house right here, right?
Yeah.
So, one of the things I think is going to be a most important to you perhaps is we're proposing the replacement of this house, which is to push it as far as we can away from it.
How far is that?
Um- Well, no, actually, it's what we, what we're doing here is I figured with the actual numbers, I figured I'd find it. Um, I think we're talking about maybe like, uh, eighteen feet, uh, or ten required. So, we've actually, you know, so you can figure it further from you.
Microphone.
In micro waste areas.
You're in that area.
So, what we're doing here is because this house is so far away from the property business, your house is here, it's close to the property line, so we're having twenty-eight feet for that. It seems to be about a subdivision. So, we're moving this, this house as far as we can.
Using it.
No, I, this house, this house is going to completely ruin my house, so I- My backyard, I wouldn't even see how my backyard is.
You should explain that. We're not, they're showing our, we're doing this.
Our site plan and our protocol.
What I'm saying to the board is-
Could you use the microphone, please?
In the neighborhood, I'm sorry, in the neighborhood, it's a small house. It has a small paint car. Most of the house is just small here. This house would be there. It's just gonna cover the whole area of almost much of miniature city compared to, uh, the rest of the neighborhood. So, I don't, I'm not expecting anybody to announce here, but in my opinion, I think I'm trying to bring to the board, it's way out of line. It shouldn't be in that, that, in that neighborhood, that type of house. Like I say, I have a lot of, I think it should be a house here, the next lot. I, I'm on Pearl Street. I want to take it across the way, and they just perform like a non-farmy shit. Your backyard is going to be quite small.
They have seventy-five, they have seventy-five hundred square feet for five houses required. Ashford is not, we're not dealing with Ashford at this point.
I think, sir-
I have no complication.
Sir?
You're dealing with so many things at once.
We're, we're only dealing with one thing.
Yeah, we can't have.
We're only dealing with one thing.
Well, that, that's my, my question.
Yeah, well, I think I-
I haven't got any answers on what's that?
I think, I think it would be helpful for you if you go to the architecture review board.
I'm not, I spoke to me in the last meeting. I spoke to you the past year before the talk.
Yes, they just were referred for pre-submission to the architecture review board. So, what's happening here, this meeting and next month, is the approval of a subdivision, which will create that one family lot on Allen Street next to you. So, then, it still has to go through site plan for the house. So, the planning board has asked the AHRB to look at it and see if it complies to their standards and come back with a recommendation to this board. This board will then look at the site plan of the new house, the massing, the size, and then make an approval or denial. And then it will go back, if approved, back to the AHRB where you get to comment again on the appearance of it. So, so lot, lot right now, then you come back and we talk about massing and, and sitting on the lot, how far away from your house? And, and the size, the bulk of it, and then back to the ARB for the appearance of it. And maybe tweaking the size of the roof and things like that.
I mean, we, we understand your, your concerns. Right now, we're not dealing with anything that looks like that. We're dealing with a flat, a flat piece of land and-
So, there's, nothing's okay on that house?
No, 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 no. No, it's not a real-
I'm happy with that. I'm not that far. I don't want to be buried. But one day I walk back home and I notice that my house is very, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Yeah.
Hi, Nancy from the different parts. I'm a little confused because the last time, um, you talked about the fact of subdividing this piece of property was to make the back piece of property conforming, but it makes some pieces of property that are non-conforming. And that, that's why you discussed, uh, uh, dealing with the Ashford Avenue piece of property at the same time. Because what you're doing is you're making a conforming piece of property, non-conforming, because you're the house, um, now non-conforming piece of property. And then, you're gonna deal with the Ashford Avenue property? It doesn't make any sense to me. First, it doesn't make any sense to me that you're making a conforming piece of property, non-conforming, to build the, I know the house. But, but to not deal with the Ashford Avenue property at the same time and to figure out what you're gonna do with a non-conforming piece of property and what's gonna be built there, doesn't make any sense to me. I mean, that's the big issue here for traffic and multi-housing and all these other issues. And I think it all has to be dealt with at the same time.
Can I answer that?
Yes, please.
So, we are dealing with the Ashford Avenue portion of this lot in this subdivision. So, the only thing non-conforming about the Ashford Avenue size, at once we create these two lots from the one through lot, is the setback from the back of the building to the property line. It, everything else remains the same. The other lots are not at issue here at all. They will be dealt with separately, under a totally separate review. This gives him no right to do anything with those properties. So, the, the building that's there stays there as is. The only non-conforming is the distance from the back property line.
So, you're telling me that the building that has the five, one illegal, four legal apartments-
Is gonna go back to a legal four.
Legal four.
The bit is coming out.
With a, with a non-conforming back setback.
Right, which makes no change at all.
And when you say the other lots, how many other lots are we talking about?
There's two other lots along Ashford from that existing house, which is on the lot that we're talking about right now. There's the, where the Christmas tree lot is, and then just the rock on the corner of Allen, Southfield, and Ashford. Those are two other lots.
Buildable lots?
Well, that's, you have to be determined. They're not right now. There's steep slope, there's a rock, there's, but by granting this one family lot, doesn't allow him to do anything with the others. That's a totally separate issue.
Well, I thought last time the conversation was that you were gonna deal with the Ashford Avenue subdivision at the same time, you're pushing a non-conforming block.
The idea is that that's a little confusing.
The building that's there is already not-
Number lot.
The building that's there exists, the existing building is non-conforming.
But it's like you're making a conforming piece of property.
No, no, the one in the back, the one on Ashford Avenue is already non-conforming. The one that's existing.
No.
No, it's-
This one is the conforming.
No, 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 the next to it.
That's the-
No, the other one, the one that, in the dark blue box.
This one.
It is.
That's good for us.
There's nothing there.
This is a lot.
Oh, gotcha. There's no lot.
The Christmas tree and this, but this is with a rocky.
Right, right.
This is a conforming piece of property where-
That's the dry claim, that's the dry claim.
Well, where's the house?
Right here, yes.
Okay, so this is a conforming piece of property here with this house? This is one lot, two lots, three lots?
Yes.
So, you're taking a conforming piece of property, you're cutting off the backyard to build back here.
Right.
Right. So, you're making this conforming, this non-conforming, and then you're not dealing with this at all?
Correct.
So, the reason it makes sense is because this is an odd condition in which the, the, there's a property that crosses two zoning lots. And you have just heard the owner of the house that is adjacent say what we're supporting, which is that it does not make sense for there to not be a house on the lot that is represent, that is gonna be created by this new subdivision. That's the only thing, the only thing that we're doing now is making a legal lot where it's possible for presumably a contextual house to go in, single-family house, to go into a single-family neighborhood. And the adjacent owner agrees? I mean, there's no, you know, you agree with, you understand that, right? So, then, so the issue of what that house-
Lee, what you're buying here is not the what's making this conforming and non-conforming, it's what you're doing back here.
Both things are required. That his lot is not-
It's a private sale that has nothing to do with what you're doing is changing the conform line in back here.
No, both things are happening. He has to show that he's, that he's acquiring the property to the left there to make that a legal-sized lot for a single-family house.
Right, but presumably he's buying that for the next year, and he prefers that's a private sale for some piece of property.
Right.
They call it this approved.
What you're doing is you're, he's getting this piece of property, and then you're pushing this property line back in order to give him this, this as a conforming piece of property. That was my point.
The, the private sale depends on the subdivision change, which is what would happen here.
I, I understand that. But my understanding that the last meeting was that you were gonna incorporate the Ashford Avenue piece of property into this because of the, because of changing a conforming piece of property to a non-conforming.
No, that, we discussed that. That, that wasn't decided and that's not the reason. The reason was for, to see what they were doing there. That was, now, I made that statement and I suggested that may be something that you want to do. But ultimately, I think the board is indicating that they want to create this single-family lot along Allen Street, have a house built there, and then deal with any Ashford Avenue development on a future date.
Right, so both developments have yet to go be formally submitted. Either the house or whatever's gonna, may or may not get built along Ashford Avenue.
Well, let me ask you another question.
Gotta use the microphone.
When you give, you're like, oh, sorry. Thought it was really loud.
We're not for a 2D.
When you give them this piece of property, is, is there gonna be a request for a subdivision on this piece of property?
Those lots exist.
Already the lots exist.
The lots exist.
There may be a, a request for a merger.
Of the, of these two lots, not with-
We don't know, that's hypothetical.
Should be.
Well, but you're, but you're telling me this, this house is going to remain as a four apartment.
Well, that's- We'll see.
That's what the applicant's saying.
That's what they're saying now, but we'll see. I mean, truthfully, we, we're not saying anything, in that purple parcel that you see there, we're not saying anything about that tonight.
So, we have absolutely no idea what that ultimately could be.
No, we do have an idea because the applicant actually has done us a favor and given us a hint about what he would like to do, which we often don't get. But we are not judging any of that tonight. We're not evaluating it in any way.
And he's by no means, um, restricted by what he's indicating to you in the future, but what?
We don't know what he's gonna do. I mean, he has to formally submit.
I understand.
Yeah?
Thank you.
And we don't know what that's gonna be yet, too.
Thank you.
Sure.
So, Mr. Village Attorney? Yes, sir. Do you want to, uh, close the public hearing? Does anybody else want to speak? So, I would move we close the public hearing. Is there a second? All in favor?
So, Chairman, then we have a draft resolution from our, um, planner. Uh, there's bits of tweaks to it that I made this afternoon tonight. Um, that I'm gonna finalize in a final resolution, so I can initially just, uh, indicate what the motion may be, as I understand the board is leaning towards, uh, for the subdivision. And then I could finalize the details and get a copy to everyone to review before we get it to the applicant. That's okay?
Yeah, I can, thank you.
So, the, the motion would be Village Docks Ferry Planning Board Resolution approving the minor rear yard setback waiver and granting preliminary subdivision approval for the subdivision of property at three sixty-four Ashford Avenue and the, uh, adjoining, um, uh, Allen Street lot. To create a conforming lot on Allen Street here and after twenty-six Allen Street and provided for certain restrictions regarding the use-
and providing for certain restrictions regarding the use and future development and the balance of the lot at three sixty-four Ashford Avenue. That would be the motion you would consider with some details that we'll revise. Someone want to make that?
I would make that motion.
If you want to see on the paper, I'll be the first.
Well, what are the restrictions?
Well, there was some restriction, talk about restricting the number of units on that lot potentially. Uh, that, that I think would come down the road when the development comes in. I think that's a difficult site. I think that's a difficult traffic site. I think the number of units on there would have to be limited. Um, I think we've sort of indicated that to the applicant. I don't think there'd be a specific restriction at this point. Uh, because we don't know, uh, we need to do a traffic analysis of that and see what could potentially work there.
Is the public, is the public hearing staying open on three sixty-four? Are you, uh, prepared?
We're not doing the only, it's not doing my parent. This is strictly the subdivision of the lot on, on, uh, Ashford Avenue, just to be clear again, and the Allen Street lot.
Okay.
And that's it. That's the subdivision we're doing. That's it. We're not doing site plan on anything. We're not doing the big lot on Ashford Avenue, so the record is clear. Just the sm- where the existing four-family home is on Ashford and the lot on Allen Street. That's it. Right?
Yes, right, that's it.
Okay.
It's totally clean, there's a safe, there will be some lookout for some restrictions.
Correct.
Okay. But they're, they're completely unspecified this time.
Well, at this point, we can't, I don't think we could say, you know, you limit it to five units or eight units or ten. You still have that power going forward. Sure, on three sixty, on, on the lot that, that borders Southfield. The lots that border Southfield and Ashford, which are east, I believe, of the existing Ashford Avenue lot. So, when they come in with that, you will have the ability to restrict at that point. In, in your site, in, in your site plan review, which would be a recommendation to the board of justice?
So, there's no as-of-right number of units? By passing the subdivision, we have, shall we say carte blanche?
Well, um, he would have the right, it's a site plan. Uh, there are the lots in this. He would have a certain density allowable under the code, which may not work based on the traffic indicate, implications there, um, which will be, I, I see, I'm another traffic engineer, but it would probably be dangerous. Uh, if it went above a certain number. I don't know what that number is. We have to talk to Phil Greeley and have them appone. Um, so at some point, you're going to have to deal with that. If he in fact wants to build on that lot, it is a tough site. It, it's, it's a lot. I think, I know he has something that he's submitted that he thinks he wants to do there. But that has to be analyzed in detail. But, I mean, there is a density you're allowed under the code. I don't know what that is exactly. You can try to figure that out. Um, but you will be able to, under the site plan review and secret review process, limit that if it's a danger, which I, which it clearly is going to be.
It's not the similar, the similar to the gas station.
Right.
That we studied for a long time and it actually does. Building that's small.
Right. And less intense of a use.
Okay.
Anyway, there's, there's a motion and was, was there a second?
We want to see the paper.
I'm sorry, the motion is to-
Well, I, I think the resolution went around. Okay, we, we have, we have, we have a lot of tweaks to it.
I've looked at the draft resolution. Is that what we are?
Yeah, but there's going to be some tweaks to it.
So, do we, so do we act on it tonight or?
Yeah, yeah, you can act on it tonight and I can make the revision subsequent. And then send it around and then when it's final, when everyone's good with it, we can get it to the applicant file.
Yeah, don't bring it, we still need to get a flat outside, so.
You're going to come back for final subdivision? Right.
And you need to, uh, tweak your flat and to the side, to the size of the, uh, easement and to remove the other lots off of it.
But like, one of the issues to be added to the, to the resolution is there, they're indicating ten-foot easement, wide easement across the, for the sewer, I think, in Stormwater. It needs to be fifteen, so that's going to be added to the resolution. There's going to be some, uh, additions to the resolution concerning the four-family hu- house and what needs to be legalized.
The parking?
Anything to be gained?
Parking issues also in the-
Anything to be gained by taking action tonight as opposed to getting a clean, circulating a clean resolution?
We can wait till next month.
We've waited before.
I think we run out of time, so. I might just, I'll save it.
We ran out of time in the sense under the code.
The, the contract technically expired in November. We give it a one-month extension.
So, you get a preliminary flat approval? Does that mean he can then close on the neighboring property?
I think what that does to me is satisfies the labor who's been waiting for this for, since February, um, that this is moving forward as opposed to just going to be talked about in November to get it back.
Ms. Chairman, I mean, a lot of municipalities actually don't even have resolutions and they write them subsequently. We do do it for the ZDA too. We have something in draft form, which is probably seventy-five percent there. But I think we need to, you know, make some changes to it. You can act tonight if you want or you can-
It's what we're comfortable with.
Whatever you're comfortable with, exactly.
Uh, what's the, what's the process for your tweaks and so forth? Does it get circulated to the chairman?
To the whole board ultimately. And I'll work on it with Dwight and George and Ed, make sure we're good, then we'll get it to you guys to look at and then we'll finalize.
And, and our goal would be to have that, uh, end changes planned. So, I have absolutely final on, uh, any area. So, end changes, it's not like we're outside poking. It's like this gives us the, okay, so go, make the changes, George, as they ask, and then we submit that to you and then three weeks, three months. And then you put, give the final in, uh, the media area. Like, do everything well next week.
So, this comes up in front of us again?
Yeah. Yeah, they got to come from us.
It's a, it's a twelve-step nature process.
First, you admit you're planning.
It's a two-step process in the subdivision approval, but the preliminary really does create, really can't deviate in the final too much. But there will be some final tweaks that he needs to make on his plan to conform, health department issues, the size of the easement, et cetera.
Right. And, uh, regarding the Allen Street property, are there any restrictions that, I mean, obviously we haven't even looked at site plan or whatever, but-
Well, he'll need to comply with the sky closure plan to make sure that the neighboring property isn't, uh, the zoning code will need to be locked.
The ARB is taking care of that.
Well, this board actually needs to, I, I think Doris is correct. Um, we've actually had discussions over the last four, five months here with that and talked about how we're recommending going as far from the neighboring property as possible.